Okay, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Wednesday, June 11th, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll and establish your quorum?
Yes, good afternoon. Supervisors Kennedy?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Hume?
Here.
Serna?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is live and recorded with closed captioning. It is cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. It is also livestreamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Sunday, June 15th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14 and viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. Comments made by the public during Board of Supervisors meetings may include information that could be inaccurate or misleading, particularly concerning topics related to public health, photo registrations, and elections. The County of Sacramento does not endorse or validate the accuracy of public statements made during these open public forums. The recordings are shared to provide transparency and access to proceedings of public meetings. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to Clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. Off-agenda public comments will take place for a maximum of 30 minutes, and the remainder of the comments will take place at the conclusion of the time matters. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comments will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see Clerk staff for assistance or contact the Clerk's office at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, united, peaceful, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Again, I'd like to welcome everyone to this afternoon's board proceedings. Again, as a friendly reminder, we certainly welcome your public testimony. We ask that you complete that speaker slip and get it to the clerk so that we have your name spelled correctly for the record. You'll be called in the order that we receive the speaker request forms. We do ask that you please keep your testimony to no more than two minutes each. That way, everyone who wishes to address the Board has that opportunity. So with that, Madam Clerk, first item.
Your first item are public comments related to matters not on the post of the agenda, and we do not have anyone signed up at this time.
Wow, okay. That's kind of a first.
It's different.
All right, very good. Next item.
All right. For item number two, this is the West Jackson Highway Master Plan, a request for general plan amendments, community plan amendments, a master plan, two affordable housing strategies, a public facilities financing plan, an urban services plan, a water supply master plan amendment, and two water supply assessments related to 5,913 acres in the Vineyard and Cordova communities. And the environmental document is an environmental impact report.
Great, thank you, Flo. Supervisor, before we get started, Todd wanted to do some quick introductions.
Before he does, though, I'm kind of surprised that the clouds haven't parted and the angels aren't singing already, so. Go ahead, Todd.
Thank you, Chair Serna. Todd Smith, Planning Director, just wanted to formally introduce Emma Carrico, one of three Emmas in Planning and Environmental Review. Emma, I think this is her first presentation at the Board, but...
That's a small, small...
Just to give her an easy one, yeah. We felt it was appropriate, given her work on the project over the last couple of years, to bring it to this conclusion. A lot of work with the applicant team. Obviously, this is a major undertaking, and I know she's going to do great, so.
Great. Floor is yours, Emma.
Hi. Thank you so much, Todd. Good afternoon, Supervisors, Chair Serna. I'm Emma Carrico, Associate Planner and Project Manager for the West Jackson Highway Master Plan Project. The plan area, shown here in blue, encompasses approximately 5,913 acres. The predominant existing use is surface mining, but the plan area also contains some agricultural, industrial, and rural residential uses. Two perennial waterways, Elder Creek and Morrison Creek, travel through the plan area. The plan area is surrounded by existing cities, unincorporated communities, and other comprehensive planning efforts. In 2006, the Board directed staff to study the expansion of the county's urban policy area in the Jackson Corridor as part of the county's general plan update. As a result, the West Jackson Highway Master Plan is one of four master plans that make up the Jackson Corridor planning area. The other three are the approved Jackson Township specific plan, New Bridge specific plan, and Mather South Community Master Plan. On April 17th, 2012, the Board initiated the master plan process for the West Jackson Highway Master Plan. Over the past decade, the applicants have coordinated with the county and partner agencies to prepare the master plan, land use plan, and technical studies needed to prepare an environmental impact report. The primary purpose of the master plan is to transition the plan area from the existing patchwork of mining, industrial, and rural residential properties into a developed community with urban services. The proposed land use plan designates most parcels in the plan area for different types of development. There are three future planning areas where acreages of each land use have been allocated but have not been geographically cited. These properties are included in the plan area to ensure sufficient infrastructure planning and to establish logical planning boundaries consistent with general plan policy LU 119. Altogether, at project buildout, the land use plan would allow for 16,484 residential dwelling units, 11.5 million square feet of commercial and employment uses, 2 million square feet of industrial space, and 2,100 acres of parks and open space. The master plan circulation plan designates roads within the plan area as six-lane thoroughfares, four-lane arterials, or two-lane collectors. Public transit routes would exist along South Watt Avenue, Jackson Highway, Bradshaw Road, Rott Creek Parkway, Kiefer Boulevard, and Excelsior Road. The master plan circulation plan also includes active transportation within the plan area, such as walking and biking. Bike facilities are provided as on-street bike lanes, as well as two types of off-street trails designed exclusively for active transportation uses. Regional trails are cited and designed to provide connectivity with surrounding communities and master plans. Conventional trails are more localized to provide connectivity between land uses within the plan area. To establish the master plan, the applicants are requesting a number of entitlements. Specifically, the applicants request a series of general plan amendments, community plan amendments to the Vineyard and Cordova community plans, a rezone, adoption of the master plan, a public facilities financing plan, an urban services plan, two affordable housing strategies, an amendment to the Zone 40 water supply master plan, and approval of two water supply assessments, one for each of two water providers in the plan area. These entitlements would align existing comprehensive plans, such as the general plan and community plans, with the development proposed by the master plan and support implementation of the project. A draft environmental impact report was prepared and released for public review on July 25th, 2024. On September 9th, 2024, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to accept public comments on the DEIR, close the public comment period, and directed staff to prepare the final EIR. The final EIR was released on May 27th. It identified 12 categories for which impacts resulting from the project are anticipated to be less than significant or less than significant with mitigation. The EIR also identified six categories for which impacts are anticipated to be significant and unavoidable, including aesthetics, agricultural resources, air quality, cultural resources, noise, and transportation. There are several policies in the general plan that relate to proposed master plan projects or projects seeking to expand the urban policy area. Land Use Policy 120 requires compliance with 10 performance criteria focused on connectivity, housing diversity, pedestrian and transit-oriented design, and jobs-housing balance. The West Jackson Highway Master Plan meets all 10 performance criteria. LU 120 also requires projects to meet one of two performance metrics. The master plan complies with Alternative 2 by demonstrating that the project would result in less than 14 vehicle miles traveled per resident per day after mitigation. By meeting all performance criteria and Alternative 2, the project complies with LU 120. In coordination with the county and the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, the applicants have prepared two affordable housing strategies, one for Stonebridge and one for Granite. The Granite strategy identifies payment of affordability fees as the sole mechanism of compliance for the small portion of residential properties that they control within the plan area. The Stonebridge strategy proposes to meet up to 50% of Stonebridge's total obligation through payment of fees. The remaining portion would be fulfilled through land dedication or construction of affordable units, which would be triggered in three development thresholds as the plan area develops. The Stonebridge strategy seeks parity with other master plans in the Jackson Corridor by averaging the dedication ratios of those plans. SHRA suggested an alternative strategy that uses the affordable housing fee from 2017, the same calculation as the New Bridge project. However, Planning and Environmental Review staff found the Stonebridge strategy to be an appropriate alternative method of compliance and recommends approval of both the Granite and Stonebridge strategies as proposed. As you can see in the figure on the right, a portion of the plan area is located within the 60 to 65 decibel contours of the Mather Airport and includes some proposed single-family residential.
Emma, I'm going to interrupt. Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you, Chair. And Emma, welcome to the Board of Supervisors and interruptions. So can you just give me a brief reason or analysis as to why, one, going back, the SHRA proposal as opposed to what is being recommended by staff?
Yes. So staff is recommending approval of the applicant's strategy as they had proposed it. And what they're proposing is to average essentially the ratio of fees to housing units that are being dedicated or land that will be dedicated for those from the three other master plans in the Jackson Corridor, ultimately resulting in a ratio of 7.5%. SHRA believes that because the New Bridge project was approved first, the applicant should use the fee calculation that was used for that, which results in a slightly different ratio and a total difference of about 61 more units that would be built or land dedication equivalent for those units. I think Todd might have an addition.
If I may, Supervisor Kennedy, thanks for the question. I think the difference from staff's perspective is that the Stonebridge strategy uses the current fee, which increases every year, as opposed to one that was established or in use at the time New Bridge went through in 2017. Our preference is to use the current fee and the current average public subsidy, which really sets the current expectation for this project. It also recognizes the strategy, I mean recognizes that that fee increases over time as well. So we're more comfortable relying on the current fee and the current subsidy.
Understood. Thank you very much.
If I could just dovetail off of that. Todd, I know you were here. Dave, I'm not sure if you were here in your first iteration or not, but going back, and I think it precedes quite a bit 2017, but when this Board at the time had a lively debate and heard from affordable housing advocates, SHRA others, one of the products that came out of that kind of comprehensive reconsideration of how the county is going to approach affordable housing was to give, provide developers a wider spectrum of alternatives, whether it be, and the ability to mix and match different tools in the toolbox to meet the objectives of and obligations for the provision of affordable housing. What I see here is that in practice. So I think we should also understand that what is being proposed, and I think it's a reasonable proposal, is a reflection of what the Board's policy decision was back, whatever that year that was, was probably 2013, 14?
2014, yes.
Yeah. So again, I think that's important to underscore, and it's actually encouraging to see that because of that wider menu of options that the development community is actually taking advantage of it.
All right.
Thanks.
Yeah, cool. All righty, back to Mather Airport.
A portion of the plan area is located within the 60 to 65 decibel contours of the Mather Airport, and that area does include some proposed single-family residential. In compliance with general plan noise policy 3, the applicants prepared a detailed noise contour mapping, identified construction techniques to reduce interior noise to a maximum of 45 decibels, and agreed upon a noise monitoring plan with the Department of Airports. A forfeits vote is still required in order to approve detached single-family residential uses within the 60 to 65 decibel contour. Greenhouse Gas Measure 17 of the county's Climate Action Plan requires development proposals seeking to amend the UPA to demonstrate carbon neutrality. The West Jackson Highway Master Plan complies with Mother's Measure 17 by requiring subsequent non-residential development projects within the plan area to contribute a fair share towards the project-wide GHG emissions reduction targets. The project has already demonstrated that anticipated residential development will meet the carbon neutrality requirement. The EIR goes into further detail on the elements of the project that help achieve carbon neutrality, such as being an all-electric project, requiring energy-efficient buildings, and reducing vehicle miles traveled by increasing development density in the region. With the implementation of mitigation measures, the project will be carbon neutral. The county and applicants have conducted outreach through stakeholder meetings and public workshops, as well as standard mail notices, upkeep of the project webpage, and an email subscription list. The project was also considered through a series of advisory hearings. The Vineyard CPAC met on October 10th, 2024, and was not able to make a recommendation due to a lack of quorum, but expressed support for the project. The Cordova CPAC met on October 17th, 2024, and recommended the Board approve the project. The Planning Commission met on March 24th, 2025, and also recommended the Board approve the project. With that, staff recommends the Board take the following actions. Approve a resolution certifying the final environmental impact report as adequate and complete, adopting the sequel findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations, and adopting the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Approve a resolution amending the general plan. Approve a resolution amending the Cordova Community Plan. Approve a resolution amending the Vineyard Community Plan. Adopt the zoning ordinance amendment to the Sacramento County Zoning Code for the adoption of the West Jackson Highway Master Plan. Adopt an ordinance authorizing the rezone of several applicant-controlled properties from their existing zones to zones compatible with the proposed master plan. Adopt the public facilities financing plan. Adopt the urban services plan. Adopt the affordable housing strategies. Adopt the Zone 40 water supply master plan amendment, and approve the water supply assessments. In attendance for the applicants, we have Mike Isle, Director of Planning and Development for Stonebridge Properties, and Yasha Saber, Consulting Project Manager for Granite Construction. They've prepared a presentation for you as well, but we're also happy to take any questions you may have before that.
Great job, Emma.
Thank you.
Supervisor Rodriguez?
Emma, I don't have any questions. I just want to let you know, this is your first presentation to the Board. You did an excellent job, and it's very evident you know your stuff.
Thank you so much.
All right. I think at this point, Madam Clerk, we'll hear from the applicant's representative with their PowerPoint.
I'm going to give Metro a second to pull it up.
Good afternoon, Yasha.
Chairman Serna, members of the Board. My name is Yasha Saber with Compass Land Group, and I represent Granite Construction. I have been their project manager since 2014 on West Jackson. I'm very excited to be here today. It's been a long time coming. The suit that I chose to wear is actually symbolic in that regard, because I bought this suit in July of 2014 with a goal of wearing it to the Board one day. I do admit, though, that I did wear it a few times in between, so it's not my first time wearing it. But thank you for having us today. I really appreciate it. And Emma, great job on your presentation as well. So before 2014 and starting my own business and beginning to work on this project, I actually spent eight years at Granite Construction, working on the permitting and reclamation of several of the mines in this plan area. And that includes the Vineyard Mine, the Granite One Mine, Triangle Property, and a small borrow pit that was actually used to develop Smud's East Campus at Bradshaw and Kiefer. So it is really a unique opportunity that we can convert these mined lands into a large master plan community that will deliver much-needed housing to this area, while also adopting many of the smart growth principles in the general plan and the blueprint. And we're proud to bring that forward to you today. Of the 5,900 acres in the plan area, Granite owns about 1,000 acres. Of that 1,000 acres, we have about 145 acres of residential and mixed-use development, which will deliver about 1,100 dwelling units at buildup. We also have 250 acres of employment industrial land uses, much of which is our existing construction materials operations, which will continue to deliver backbone-building materials for infrastructure in this area. And on top of that, we are bringing forward 630 acres of parks and open space just on Granite's land alone. None of this would have been possible without many years of collaboration with our co-applicant Stonebridge Properties, with the county team, and public and agency stakeholders, and I am appreciative of all of them. Just want to thank staff in particular. Emma's been a great partner. Director Smith has been amazing to work with, as always. But special thanks also go to the teams at DWR, DOT, Parks, Special Districts, and everybody that made this project possible. That is all that I have, and I'm going to now hand it off to Mike Isle, who's going to deliver our more formal presentation to you today. But as always, I'll be available and answer any questions you may have. Thank you so much.
Well, good afternoon, Chair Serna, members of the Board. Mike Isle from Tyker and Stonebridge Properties. And thanks, Yasha, for, you know, you and Granite for everything you've done over these years. You know, as I get started, we just want to acknowledge the hard work that staff has done as well. This has been a long process. I didn't buy the suit in 2014, but it's been a number of years. And I think your deputy county exec might have been an associate planner at the time we started this, or doing some early work before making his way back. So long process, but fantastic. I think at the end of the day, we've all benefited from the input we've had, both from staff and from the community outreach that we've done. So appreciate all of that. In terms of the presentation, my goal today is really just to hit some of the high points. Emma covered really a lot of ground, so I'm going to fill in a few blanks, talk about really why we started this process, what we've been trying to do, and then we'll be available, Yasha and I, and the rest of our applicant team who's joined us in the back, available for any questions you may have. So getting started, really, the whole concept for the project started as, what do you do with these mining properties when you're done? Do you fence these off? Do you walk away? Or do you find a way to reinvigorate these properties into the neighborhoods that we operate in? For Granite and for Tyker, the decision was, let's find a way to go forward, find something we can do with these properties that's effective, that fills a community need. Not the easiest properties initially to work with. There's always challenges, geotechnical, there's topography, there's a lot of different things that people look at as they look at former mining sites. But we found a way to really kind of step these projects forward and find something great we can do. So the example I have up on the screen right now, local project, this is actually the Rosemont High School, what we call Aspen Four. And if you're looking at this map here, this is Kiefer Boulevard. This is heading south on Bradshaw Road. And for Tyker and Stonebridge, this was one of our initial first projects at repurposing properties in Sacramento County beyond what had been done years ago with Bob Powell and some of the work along American River Drive. So the idea back then, this started around the year 1999, 2000, Rosemont had been promised a high school for, I believe, over 20 years from Sac City Unified School District. And the concept was, let's take a mine site, a site we had already exhausted the mineral capacity from, and find something really neat to do with it. And so in working with Sac City Unified School District, we designed a project, I think it was about 118 acres at the time, for both a high school as well as, if you can see it here, about 105 units of residential, what we called Aspen Four Residential. And then that southwest corner, Kiefer and Bradshaw, what became the AMPM and the Starbucks facility there in Rosemont. So this was one of our first early projects, found a way to repurpose these properties. And really, the concept is, as you look at that green legacy triangle, it's mining, reclamation, and reuse. So it's finding that secondary life cycle for the properties. And that's really what we're focused on here today, as we look at a much larger opportunity in terms of scale and size. So the area in yellow, West Jackson Highway Master Plan, as Emma described, a little over 5,900 acres in the geographic center of Sacramento County. And this area between Granite and Tyker has been mined for a number of years, actually was skipped over on purpose for development. We had a number of general plan updates. Urban policy area was adjusted for a number of years, skipped over because of those mining activities. So you had Florin Vineyard Gap happening in the south, Vineyard Springs, the whole Vineyard area, a lot of work going on, but south and east of us. As these mining areas are coming to their logical end, at least portions of them, we decided it was time to initiate the process to take what we had done for the Rosemont High School in that adjacent area and take it to that scale for the West Jackson. So large opportunity, probably one of the largest infill reuses, you know, the county will see. As we look at that area, kind of zooming in, the area in purple, that's the West Jackson Highway Master Plan, incredible opportunity, not only in terms of geography, but in terms of an existing employment base. This map, which we originally prepared back in 2020, there was a little over 240,000 jobs within a five-mile radius of the project site. And one, as you're looking at this, one area you can point out in green, that's actually the Granite Regional Park. So another really good local example of repurposing a former mine site. But you have the Army Depot, UCD Med Center, Granite Regional Park, City of Rancho Cordova. So a very heavy employment base, which gives us a fantastic start to the project in terms of job opportunities, reducing vehicle miles traveled for the project.
I would also add to that, Mike, you noted the UCD Med Center, but certainly with the present development of Aggie Square, I wasn't sure if you meant Aggie Square with UCD Med Center, but I can kind of consider them separate. But that's ultimately going to be a host site for a great number of thousands of jobs.
Right.
So that's well within that five-mile radius as well.
Yeah, fantastic point. The area, as we're watching things fill out, I mean, the employment base gets better. And then as we talk about our project in particular, I think there's over 29,000 jobs that come just with the West Jackson Highway Master Plan. So it becomes a very job-rich, augmenting a very job-rich area. As we look at this exhibit, just briefly, again, West Jackson Highway Master Plan is in white, 5,900 acres smack dab in the center of the county, along Jackson Highway, surrounded by existing and planned development. So this is a huge donut hole. You look in the exhibit, there is the Rosemont community up here, Florin Vineyard Gap here, Jackson Township, New Bridge, Mather South, you name it as you look at the project area. So it is a massive donut hole in the middle of all this. And again, the area was skipped over on purpose, the mining activities for a number of years. So you see stuff south of us, you see stuff north and east of us. We see this as a fantastic opportunity to stitch these neighborhoods and these communities together. There's big gaps in services, parks, schools, trail linkages, roadway improvement. So this is an opportunity with approval of this project to really find a way to connect these communities back together. An interesting side note, what we found during the, I call it the Aspen Four project, but the Rosemont High School site and the adjacent commercial and residential, what we found back in 2000 through 2004, when we were working on the entitlements for that project, a lot of the people in the Rosemont community and surrounding area love that area. They want to stay, and a lot of them were looking for move-up housing or opportunities for newer appliances, newer options, but they wanted to stay. When we finished that project, we finished 105 units. I think we finished with an interest list of close to 40 or 50 people, just from the outreach we had done, and a number of those people ended up buying in that community. So we see this as a large unmet need in the Rosemont community. As we go into here, Yasha touched on this briefly, as did Emma. Property composition, blues, Tyker, that's a little over 3,000 acres. Green is Granite, a little over 1,000 acres. And then you have these remnant, I call them remnant partials, but partials that are not under the ownership of Granite or Tyker. are not under the ownership of Granite or Tykert in between. And when the project started, it was really, honestly, probably two different projects. Granite was doing some initial planning on their own years ago, Tykert the same, we were looking at our individual properties, kind of focused on those opportunities. And then as we got fairly well into our individual planning, Sacramento County, the Planning Department, made a decision to really ask us to come together. What can we do if we take Tykert, your 3,000 acres, Granite, your 1,000 acres, and let's create some logical planning boundaries? And go back, you know, coming back to that exhibit, and how about we round out the project with some other properties, just to get to some of the major roadways? So that was really the genesis, those individual properties for the West Jackson Highway Master Plan that you see today. So many, many years of outreach, you know, I started this project along with Randy Sater and Jim Wiley and Taylor Wiley and the group, back in honestly, 2004, 2005, just agency outreach, meeting with community members. We did a lot of work with the Rosemont Community Association at the time, what makes sense here, kind of scaling up from the Rosemont High School site. So a lot of early outreach, I know Granite was doing the same on their own timeline. We submitted a pre-application, 2009. Tykert and Granite came back after we'd submitted an initial application for that pre-app in 2009, came back and submitted the formal project in 2013. And with that, again, lots of outreach, lots of individual meetings with property owners, meetings with the Rosemont Community Association, formal meetings with the county, all which went into the project.
Mike, can I interrupt here?
Yeah, please.
So if you can go back to the slide with participating landowners and the non-participants, is this current? Or have some of those non-participants, are they, are they under option? Did you, is there an intent for either Tykert or Granite to acquire at least some of the ones that are immediately adjacent to the green and the blue in the slide?
There are a few in there now that we've acquired over time. I don't know, Grant, for Yasha, if you want to speak to that.
Supervisor Serna, no, Granite does not have any of the additional non-participants under option, and our land ownership has remained fairly consistent.
Any idea from either of you, based on what the will of the board is today, do you get a sense that that's likely going to change perhaps the disposition of those property owners? And there might be greater interest in maybe treating today as kind of the threshold past which they might want to participate?
Yeah, I think there's opportunities if there were people that want to participate. You know, certainly, as the board well knows, there's, and I'll speak to it kind of at the end here, but there's a heck of a lot of effort that comes next, you know, after we, after this master plan effort's done, in terms of infrastructure planning, setting up districts, finance districts. So yeah, I think the answer would be yes.
Great, thank you.
So, you know, as we look at all the outreach, all the work that's been done with staff and the community, just to highlight a couple of the key project features, this exhibit, so you have these long linear properties with topography, right, up and down, different, you know, due to the mining, some properties are grade, some properties are subgrade, but this long stretch along Jackson Highway. So the key concepts of this project include creating these long linear parkways. So you have this east-west corridor through here, up to Bradshaw Road, so that's from Watt Avenue to Bradshaw Road. You have Vineyard Extension that goes up through the project here. And you're providing trails, class-one trails, you're providing transit alignments, which we'll speak about in a second, and you're providing these nodes of opportunity, or these nodes of use, so schools, parks, multifamily sites, mixed-use sites, reasons for people to be on those corridors and use the trails, use the transit routes, get you from east to west, north to south, and use that really as your central organizing feature for the project, right? So you have these larger disparate properties that you try to bring together and create this connectivity with those systems, trails, transit, and different land uses along those corridors. You also have this large, we're calling it this large employment node next to Mather Airport, because of the theoretic capacity, the 60 CNL right there, where you're not doing residential, you do have the opportunity to do commercial, you do have the opportunity to do employment light industrial. So you have this large employment node up through this area, really north and east of Bradshaw and Jackson Highway. You also have urban farms, so that black circle with the N.B. on it, New Brighton, that's the historical name for these properties, the Old Township. We're proposing on the Tykert properties, a series of urban farms, and these are ways to really utilize the opportunity to have open space, to have some recreation, and provide fresh local produce to these communities that we're ultimately developing in. So some of the key, key project features here, and as you drill down from there, you know, Emma covered this really well in terms of the affordable housing. So there's affordable housing that comes with the project. Again, we have the ability to, at least as proposed, build, dedicate, pay fee, a little different than some of the other projects, more of a hybrid, we're including a few other options on there, to ensure at the end of the day that affordable housing gets built. Transit, this exhibit is really a composite exhibit, so what you're looking at is a series of different transit routes between West Jackson Highway, which is in the dashed orange. So you watch that alignment come up from Manlove Station down south Watt, work its way down our primary project spine, back up to the regional, community and regional commercial at Bradshaw and Jackson, and then work its way back down to the high school, middle school site, and then back up through the Vineyard Extension and around. So that's the dashed orange. What this also shows in the red stipple, the red dots, Jackson Township, the routes they were approved with, it shows in green, the New Bridge and Mather South routes, and then in blue, heading north-south are these regional transit master plan routes as well. So it's an area ultimately that's very heavy in transit, and we think will benefit greatly from that. Project features as well, this is a slightly older exhibit, I think Mike Penrose actually may have prepared this years ago. But like the exhibit for one reason, it shows the coordinated planning effort between West Jackson, well, between the county with the four project applicant teams at the time, that was West Jackson, we all know where that is now, Jackson Township slightly to the east, New Bridge, and Mather South. And what you're looking at is, in green and red, those are the class-one trail systems that are proposed, proposed and approved for the other projects. So there's major linkages running through, starting on the west here, you know, Morrison Creek, our Rock Creek Parkway, back up through the Vineyard Extension, back up through Kiefer Boulevard to the Rosemont Community and through the other projects. And again, important piece for us is providing that connectivity to Rosemont. That's something we heard time and time again during the early planning, don't leave us behind, give us the opportunity to use the parks, to use the trails, you know, don't seal us off here. And that's, that's one of the, the big pieces of this trail system. And I'll zoom in here on a slightly different take. So you have this overall trail exhibit showing all four projects, and this is just showing something we've been working on a little more recently with staff and the Congresswoman's office, which is creating what we're calling, there could be a cooler name, somebody may come up with, but right now, we're calling it the American River Loop Trail Alignment. And what you're looking at here is existing trails in blue, class-one trails, running along the American River Parkway, back down south of 50, down the Folsom South Canal, and then also down south Watt, down right near the property Tykert owns, right near the Manlove Transit Station. And then in green, new trails as part of our trail system. And what this ultimately creates is close to a 28-mile loop system between the existing trails that we're leveraging and some of the new trails, a portion of the new trails that we're building for the West Jackson Highway Master Plan. So we think that's something to really get excited about, and we're currently working with your staff, your Department of Transportation, on some ways to implement this as an early phase of the project.
Mike, the trail system you have there, the loop, that would be a composite of on and off-street, correct? Designated and non-designated?
Yes, correct. Yep. And actually, Chair Serna, glad you asked, part of what this first phase we're looking at is some planning money, some planning grants, to take some of the on-street, the off-street, and figure out the best ways to create these initial alignments. You know, one of the tricks is, well, for any trail system, but, you know, along Kiefer Boulevard, existing Rosemont Community, you know, you have, you have Kiefer Boulevard running right through here. So how do you, how do you set that, how do you formalize that system? Also connecting, you have this system going, you know, getting up through the extension of Excelsior Road to Mather Boulevard, through Independence at Mather. So there's some connections that we're going to be looking at in terms of how to first implement that trail system.
Great, thank you.
So in summary, what does the project provide? Over 16,000 units of housing, including affordable housing, employment and commercial opportunities, over 29,000 jobs, including six schools, high school, middle school site, greenhouse gas reduction, wellness and recreational opportunities, we mentioned the three urban farms. I think we have about 28 miles of planned class-one trails throughout the project site, and over 2,100 acres cumulatively between the Granite and the Tykert properties of open space and recreation. And equally, if not as important, at least exciting to Tykert and Granite and the mining companies, is the reuse and repurposing of industrial lands. We're only as good as our last project, you know, we have viable mining operations that continue on both companies, and it's important to us, to both companies, that we successfully transition these properties after we're done. So that's a big, that's a big thing for both, both of us. And why does it matter? Well, we know there's a housing crisis in California, we know it's both a supply and a pricing issue. 16,000 homes, mixed uses, mixture of densities provided with the project. Project's designed to be conditioned for net zero. The project also, from the work we've done, because we're job-rich in terms of what we're proposing, 29,000 jobs with the proposed project, we actually reduce VMT from some of the adjacent approved projects. So because of that job-rich nature, we can intercept trips, reduce VMT through that. And the project has a large area for overall stormwater detention, which creates a safety net, if you will, for downstream properties along Morrison Creek. We have the ability to take on larger amounts of water, and then pump that back to the system off-peak. So that provides some resiliency in our eyes for climate change. And Chair Serna, you made a comment about, when this started, about the, maybe the clouds partying and an angel or a heart playing. So this, this exhibit was just, I knew you were going to say that, so that was just for that. Timed it perfect. So really going forward, you know, this is the first step. This is, this is a big, major first step, asking for the approval of the master plan associated entitlements, but there's a heck of a lot of work to do still. So our plan is, you know, we've already started working on implementation, what's that going to look like, what are the first phases going to look like, but a lot of work to do. So we are looking forward to continuing that effort with the county and your staff. And with, with that, I will conclude my remarks, and we are available if you need us for comments or questions.
Thanks, Mike. I have a general question. So if I'm not mistaken, both Tykert and Granite have mining operations, different mineral mining operations, I think spread across the state, correct? So is, in terms of this being a first, is it, how cutting-edge is this in terms of reuse of mining sites, which, you know, personally for me is one of the more impressive aspects of doing the comprehensive planning, because we're, we're taking what would otherwise be viewed by some as a scar on the landscape, and turning it into something that I think we can appreciate as something much more than that?
Sure.
So I'm just curious to know if there are other communities across the state, or even nation, that you are, you two are aware of, that have taken an aggregate mining operation and are attempting to do what you want to do with it?
Yeah. And I'll add a few things, and then you want to, Yasha. I mean, so locally, Villages of Zimpano was a very successful, it wasn't done by Granite or Tykert, but that was the old Lone Star Pit. So that's, that's one very good local example. Granite Regional Park, what's it?
Rockland.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, you got all the quarries out in Rockland. You have, we're actually doing on the Tykert end, we've done one in Folsom, along Levy Road, smaller one, 10 acres. We have 180-acre site in Truckee, that's in the process, it's, there's homes there, there's people living there. That's a former mine site that we used years ago to do the Squaw Valley Olympics, build Interstate 80. Certainly Granite Regional Park, I don't know if there's any other, there's certainly other options for other ones.
Mining is our business, and we've permitted mines all across the west and worked on reclamation projects. Nothing of this scale that I'm ever aware of, at least not in America. It's possible it's been done in other countries, but nothing at this grand of a scale. And there are many successful examples of mine reclamation, some of which support water management, open space, habitat, but this project really brings all of that together in this unique way, which is really exciting.
You know, I, again, I think it's an important part of your project narrative, that that's what you're achieving with your, your proposal, and I'm glad to hear you recognize that, and acknowledge on the record the fact that the order of magnitude is what's kind of unique here, so. All right, questions from my colleagues? All right, seeing none. Madam, thank you. Do we have anyone else from staff or the applicant's team that need or wish to speak? I don't think so. So in that case, Madam Clerk, members of the public?
We do have one speaker, Roxanne Fuentes.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Roxanne Fuentes from Sacramento. I'm opposed to this project. This undeveloped land is most of the last open space in eastern Sacramento County, not already slated for development. Prime farmland, farmland of statewide importance and farmland of local importance will be lost if this project goes forward. Under the no-project alternative, the grasslands, agricultural habitat, trees would be retained in the plan area that supports special status plant and wildlife species known to occur in the area. The golden eagle, threatened giant garter snake occur in the area. The tricolored blackbird, which is emergency listed as endangered, has the smallest range in North America, occurs in the plan area. The whitetail kite is fully protected, and the burrowing owl is in decline, they occur in the plan area. American badger, western pond turtle, western spade-footed toad, threatened vernal pool fairy shrimp, endangered vernal pool tadpole shrimp, mid-valley fairy shrimp, and lindriella all occur in the area. Sanford arrowhead, legendary, and Boggs Lake hedgehog are only a few of the endangered plants found in the area. There are many other species in the area, all which would be destroyed if this project moves forward. Regarding Mather Airport versus development, Sacramento County Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan and General Plan prohibits residential development inside the community, community noise equivalent level 60 dB contour. An update to this, to this plan would allow six, development within 60 to 65 dB contour, and it would be a mistake to allow this development so close to the airport and runways. Remember Farrell's ice cream parlor tragedy at the Executive Airport? Also having housing so close to the airport may preclude staging air shows in the future. Widening Jackson Road to six lanes would encroach upon people's property and cause loss of wetlands. Under the no-project alternative, there would be no loss of agricultural land rural residential uses and wildlife habitat. Under the no-project alternative, the visual aesthetics of the area would be retained, and historic and tribal cultural resources would not be disturbed. There would be less impact on transportation under the no-project alternative, as well as less error noise and light pollution. The no-project alternative would not impact Mather Airport activities, including air shows.
Thank you, Roxanne.
That concludes your public comments.
All right, very good. I do have, it occurred to me, I do have a question for the applicants. And it's really, it really stems from just a personal experience, and that personal experience is my wife and I living as close to SMF as we do in Westlake and Natomas, and having lived there for almost a quarter century now. Being as close as we are to an active airfield, airport, what is the intent, if any, relative to navigation easements, especially as it relates to the area that you're asking us to consider the override for, the units that would be under the, or within the 60, 65 dB L?
So the, the intention is for the entire project to have navigation easements?
Okay.
And then there are some requirements that we do agricultural theming for some of the properties, or, sorry, I said agricultural, aviation theming closer to the airport. So in terms of landscape signage, just as more visual clues to be abundantly clear that there is an airport nearby? Am I missing anything? Am I missing anything?
The project also includes substantial conditions for enhanced acoustical treatments of any of the homes within that 60 to 65 CNL boundary. And we have to come forward and demonstrate that we actually meet those noise criteria.
Chair Serna, Planning Director Todd Smith, just want to chime in. Because we know of these ongoing issues at Sacramento International Airport, we did not take staff's recommendation lightly. We coordinated very closely with our Department of Airport staff to undertake the structure of the acoustical testing, as, as the applicants have indicated, such that it would be demonstrated that the proposed building materials would actually reduce the noise interior for these homes in the future.
I'm really pleased to hear all of that, because I can tell you that, well, all my wife and I have become accustomed to planes flying at low altitude, sometimes directly over us, especially in the summer months when we're out and trying to enjoy the patio and the swimming pool, that the city, to my knowledge, does not re, or has not required it, and did not require it for the Natomas Community Plan, of which Westlake is a part. And what that does is unfortunately set up expectations that somehow the county, because we're the operator of the airport, that will somehow go and affect flight patterns, which of course we cannot do, that's reserved for the FAA. So it, it sets up unfortunate conflicts later on when especially resale buyers move in, and if there's not an navigation that runs with the property, then they can become very surprised, depending on whether or not a realtor, you know, chose to emphasize disclosure or not. So, it's, I'm really pleased to hear that there is a intent from the outset to make sure it's very clear about how close folks will be living next to an active airport. All right, any other questions, comments from board members? All right, seeing none. How, how should we take the, I'm looking at county council here, just for, for our procedures, how should we take up the, the motion?
You actually can make a motion to approve staff's recommendation, and that will cover everything in one fell swoop.
Very good. Glad to hear you say that. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you. I apologize, you kind of moved straight into how do we get to a motion without having the opportunity to weigh in and opine. And I just want to say, first of all, I, I would have fit in this suit back in 2014, but I did not buy it then. But I, I think that that is a testament to how long a plan of this magnitude takes to reach this date. And then, you know, we're still potentially a decade away from actually delivering on, on what is promised in this plan. And, and so I, I think, you know, people don't realize, no pun intended, how long of a runway development truly takes in order to, to meet some of the needs that, that we're obviously experiencing. I did have a quick question for staff, because I've been scouring things and trying to find it, but I know that in discussing this, both with the applicant as well as staff, I had talked about the impact, positive and negative, to the Rosemont community of this development, particularly with respect to the commercial. And what I, I, I recognize two sort of impending needs. And the first is, is that this plan, as all plans do, will develop more with housing at the front end, who will be reliant on existing commercial. And then, as the, you meet a certain critical mass, you will see commercial develop within the plan. And so, at one time, we had talked about a, a way that, that this plan will, would supplant or somehow account for that to enhance the existing commercial corridor within Rosemont. Can somebody point out to me where I might find codification of that?
I can start to answer that question, Supervisor Hume, and perhaps the applicant team can add to my thoughts. We have had some initial conversations with both Granite and Tykert or Stonebridge about a potential development agreement that could embody that. We weren't able to get to that at this point, but I believe both parties are interested in continuing that conversation. Our focus over the last couple of months has been, has been to get to this point, knowing that there would be subsequent opportunities for that discussion.
Okay. And so then what sort of, you know, I mean, assurance is a strong word, but how, how can I have confidence that, that that won't get lost, even if this supervisor isn't sitting in this chair?
I might direct that question to the applicants.
Okay.
Obviously, I can't speak for them, but I know we've had that conversation with both of them. And from a staff perspective, I tend not to lose those thoughts.
Appreciate it.
Supervisor Hume, we know, from, from the years we've been working on this, the commercial corridor's always been an issue. I mean, from early on, along Kiefer Boulevard, through numerous meetings with the Rosemont Community Association and meetings with others. I don't know what kind of assurances I could offer right now, but I do know with 16,000 new homes, you know, there's going to be a tremendous additional amount of demand beyond what we're just providing with our commercial, which will lag. I mean, that's generally the way it goes. So, hopefully through that, new demand and streetscaping permits, the trails, the trails that go down Kiefer Boulevard, bringing new people through there. Certainly our understanding is there are some issues with the ownership pattern, or has been in the past, in terms of challenges for upgrades to the structures and the buildings, which have probably hampered some of the viability. Hopefully with time, you know, I mean, that's probably something above and beyond us, but hopefully with some time, you know, there are some opportunities for that. You see Dutch Brothers over there, which seems to be doing quite well. Newer structure, made use of that area next to the old Del Taco. So hopefully with new people coming in, some money, rehab revitalization, you know, we'll see, see some improvements to that center.
So if I may, I believe it's in Mather South that there is a infill fee, for lack of a better term. Does that exist here, or is that contemplated to be implemented here? Something of that nature? It might be used to, because you're, you're right about the ownership situation, and I don't know how to dangle a big enough carrot to somebody that doesn't want to take it.
Yeah, in the context of Mather South and New Bridge as well, the infill fee exists in both of their respective development agreements. Those go beyond NEXUS, and so we couldn't get to a place of conditioning the project. It's also embedded in our climate action plan as a subsequent step for the staff to do some sort of NEXUS study to more clearly quantify what that might be beyond what's been essentially agreed to by those other two projects. I, I know the applicant team, at least on the Stonebridge side, is interested in what that shapes up to be.
Yeah. And so those entitlement documents are forthcoming, and that would be negotiated at a later date?
Correct.
Okay. And then for Emma, on page 5-21 of Attachment 3, there's a picture painted of a bicycle on some pavement.
Give me a second to catch up to you.
Well, I don't have a question about it, I just wanted to point it out to you, that there is a picture of a bicycle painted on some pavement.
Great.
Okay. Just wanted to make you sweat a little bit for your first presentation.
Thank you so much.
All right. Okay, so, any other questions or comments from board members? Okay. All right, so we can take one simple motion for staff's recommendation?
Chair, I would happily make that motion.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded?
And Supervisor, before you take the vote, I want to ensure that that motion that you made includes the override of the Mather Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan.
Actually, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I, I would like to give my thoughts on that before we do take the vote on this, which would include that. And that is, for those that maybe are watching this or view this sometime in the future, this plan, because it was in process for so long, the calculations of how the impact of the airport would affect noise contours changed. And so the plan was already well on its way, and so then the line got moved. And so that, by overriding this, we are going to take some things to make sure people can enjoy the comfort of their home, as was mentioned by the chair. But thank you for bringing that up. It is, I am aware of it, I am cognizant of it, and I recognize that that was a, a moving of the goalposts that happened during the, the processing of the entitlements.
Thank you for pointing that out, because that does take a different voting threshold. So, okay, we have a motion and a second, and the motion has been made clear, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
All right, thank you. And thanks again, Emma.
Thank you all very much for having me.
All right.
Okay, our next item is county executive comments.
Thank you, Flo. Just wanted to make a quick comment, if Metro Cable could put up the picture for me, please. We've had a couple of questions from some of the supervisors regarding a recent event that happened. So, Bradshaw Animal Shelter recently teamed up with the governor and the first partner for, to promote Adopt a Pet Day, which was, happens to be on June 7th of last week. It was a statewide effort to get shelter animals into loving and finding their new home. Those two particular dogs there are actually from the animal shelter, puppies about six, six to eight weeks old.
I hope it's a therapeutic dog.
Yeah, yeah, I think we all need those.
Well, they, he can usually use it, so.
This was before that. But, so the governor, first partner, had photos taken, did a video for us that we put on our website, and, along with these two cute little puppies. So, the adoptions were fully sponsored by California Animal Welfare Association. The event was an extreme success. We've had about 97 animals, almost 100 animals adopted out to, on that particular event day, which was fantastic, because that's about 20% of our population. Unfortunately, our population's about 500 right now, with it being cat season, and we've heard that before. So the last thing I would just add is, you know, this is just another partnership that Director Inette Bedworth has been working on. She has tremendous outreach into the community. She does a fantastic job of, of working with various partners with us to find forever homes, to get guests out of our, out of our Bradshaw Animal Shelter, and she does such a fantastic job out there, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. Okay, next, our board comments.
I'll, I'll just make a comment about adopting a pet. I, when I toured the, oh gosh, what is it, the Bradshaw facility, it, it was, it's really clean, it's really neat, and I think people should tour it. I adopted a German Shepherd back in 2020, and I'm afraid that if I go there, I'm going to end up with five German Shepherds, but it is a-
That's our goal.
I have the yard for it. But, yeah, so anyways, yeah, it's a great place to visit, and I hope that people do adopt, adopt animals through the shelters before they go and purchase them from other, you know, private organizations.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you very much. All right, if there is no further business, then before this board, we adjourn.